Okay, well, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if you're available and would like to, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell. Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item is public items, and that's members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note, individuals may make public comments limited to five minutes. We did have a sign-up sheet here, and I think you see it from way in the back, there's nobody on it, that does not preclude you from coming forward at this time if you would like to speak. Oh, that's a public meeting. Anyone out there? Please come forward and state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Rose Gueranger.
Yeah, I think we'll have to turn that off for you.
There we go. Green lights. My name is Rose Gueranger. I live at 9931 West 56th Street for the last 23 years. So, good evening to the mayor and his council members. I received the weekly e-newsletter from the city of Merriam, and last week's included a notification that the city is helping to host the Go Green 2022 event that's coming up this Saturday, the 17th, over at the Powell Community Center. The event includes an opportunity for residents to safely recycle electronic equipment, and that's great. As the council considers future policies regarding fossil fuels and renewable energy, I hope you'll consider the toxicity of lithium batteries and solar panels making their way into our landfills. Policies should not outpace the science of disposing of these items. I encourage each of you to watch Michael Moore's video called Planet of the Humans. It investigates the real impact of major green initiatives. You know, Mr. Moore is a well-known documentary filmmaker and activist, and his conclusions are eye-opening and unexpected. The film's readily available for free online. The U.S. Geological Service and Bloomberg News estimate that 75% of the polysilicon used in the solar panels are produced in western China by an ethnic minority group that are used as slave labor there, and massive coal plants used to make this polysilicon that goes into these solar panels. Additionally, the mining that was required for other components requires lots of diesel machinery and that coal-fired electricity. Because less than 10% of the solar panels come from the United States, we need a lot of gas and diesel to truck them around the planet to get here. Even the Los Angeles Times warns about the high cost of recycling old panels and the hazardous chemicals leaching into the soil and the water after a short 10- to 15-year lifespan for these solar panels. So I would just urge you to consider the long-term implications of any green energy initiative. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, seeing no way of rushing the podium, we will end the public items and go on to the next item, which is our consent agenda. As the consent agenda, all items are listed under the heading or considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member's sole request, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda item and considered separate. Is there anybody that wants an item removed? Okay, I see no one wanting to remove an item. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to consider the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held August 22nd, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
That's not the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's the second.
Yeah, second one.
This one right here.
Oh, sorry. I move that the council approve Consent Agenda Item 1 and 2. Thank you.
We have a motion. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Yeah, we have a motion, second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item is the mayor's report, and I get to read a proclamation. I always love getting to do that, and this proclamation says, "Whereas the city of Merriam is welcoming and inclusive and dedicated to improving the quality of life for those we serve, and whereas what began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson and was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover 30-day periods starting on September 15th, the United States observes Hispanic Heritage Month, and whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America as well as Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America, and whereas the purpose of Hispanic Heritage Month is to create awareness of the contributions of people of Hispanic heritage to the American culture. Many people of Hispanic heritage serve as civil rights leaders and community organizers, politicians, teachers, journalists, first responders, responders, artists, healthcare professionals, athletes, inventors, entertainers, and more. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is tied to the celebration of the rich tapestry of our community and reflects an array of distinct cultures, therefore, I, Bob Pape, on behalf of the Merriam City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourage all community to join us in celebrating the great contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans in our city, state, and nation. Proclaim this 12th day of September, 2022." Bob Pape, Mayor. There you go. I do have one other item, which isn't currently listed on the agenda there, but I would like to thank Anna and her staff for the great show of any -- hopefully, everyone out there got a chance to attend, and I know a lot of our council, and I appreciate the council being there as well, our Turkey Creek Car Show, and it was real great, right up to the very end when it started to rain, but I just tried to tell everybody we offered free car washes there as they were leaving. I don't think that really helped, but it was a great time, and it's a great event. Actually, we want to thank a lot of the community, because that couldn't be put on. It's not just the city that's putting that thing on. We have a lot of dedicated volunteers every year that step forward and help the city to put on that event, and I could name, but I probably would miss some, so I will just thank the community and thank the council for attending, and thank Anna, and if you would thank your staff for a job well done. Oh, and Julie, Julie, she's the wheel that keeps that thing turning, and we definitely want to give her a special recognition. Okay, anyway, round of applause for all those people.
Is there a place where we can see the winners if we weren't able to see them in person?
I was in meetings all day. They will be online on the Turkey Creek Car Show event page. Hopefully tomorrow I'll get those up, but they have to be reformatted, so.
Awesome.
All of them will be listed there. Hopefully, we'll just say by the end of the week.
Thank you. It was so much fun. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you, Director Slocum. Okay, well, let's move right along to council items. Number one is award construction contract to Kansas Heavy for the Fifth Street project. We have Director McDonald.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight I am seeking approval of the construction contract in the amount of $2,286,259.80 with Kansas Heavy for the 55th Street Improvement Project. On August 9th, we received four bids for this project. The scope of the project includes new curbs and gutters along both sides of the roadway, replacement of a 42-inch storm drainage pipe crossing 55th Street at Perry Lane. We're going to line over 2,200 feet of failing corrugated metal pipe, install over 3,000 feet of new six-foot sidewalk on the south side of the roadway, replace over 3,500 feet of substandard sidewalk on the north side of the roadway. We have a new underdrain behind the sidewalk on the north side of 55th, which would be just west of the Sonic, complete mill and overlay, pavement markings including bike lanes and -- I lost my spot. Bike lanes from Swite to Merriam Drive, that would be dedicated bike lanes that would be going east and west, and then new LED streetlights on 55th Street. Our original project budget was $2,371,943. We had some expenditures to date. The first one was the streetlight supplies for 55th Street, which is the LED streetlights that we purchased for the project, and that was $57,129. And then the cost to acquire the necessary temporary construction easements, and the cost for that was $64,609.13. This included all of the temporary construction easements, the right-of-way council fees, court costs, and appraiser fees. This left us with a project balance of $2,250,204.87. Kansas Heavy was the lowest bid for this project, and that left us with a shortage of $36,054.93. We'd like to use available funds from our CIP Sidewalk Maintenance Repair Program to cover this shortage. The city will receive up to $1,049,000 from Johnson County Cars Program for eligible expenses for this project once it's completed, and we had, BHC was our project engineer, and they checked all bids for accuracy and recommends that the project be awarded to Kansas Heavy, which was the lowest bid price. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Do you want to have any questions for Director McDonald?
Has Kansas Heavy Construction done business with us before?
Yes, they were part of the Maston project two years ago, and that was also the Johnson Drive from Antioch to the east.
And it was a good outcome.
Yeah, they did good work for it. They put that turn lane there at the school for us, so they did a good job.
Thank you.
Ms. Yodrich.
At the time, we did business with them before. Did we ask if they pay prevailing wage or anything like that?
We do not ask that.
We haven't asked? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council award the contract to Kansas Heavy Construction for the 55th Street improvements in the amount of $2,286,259.80.
Okay, we have a motion, and Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like you're up again, Director McDonald, for consider approval of revised interlocal agreement with City of Overland Park.
Correct. Back in July, the city council approved an interlocal agreement with the City of Overland Park for the engineering and design costs for repairs on the 75th Street Bridge. After reviewing the request for qualifications, HDR Engineering was selected. Staff from Overland Park worked with HDR Engineering to discuss the scope of work and obtain their fee estimate for the requested work. The new fee estimate was substantially higher than the estimated cost earlier approved by council. At that time, our portion was $55,000. The new estimated design cost for the repairs is $161,040, with the Merriam's portion now at $80,520. This was an unexpected expenditure, so we're requesting to use CIP contingency funds for the design costs for this project. In 2023 CIP budget, we do have funds allocated for what we believe are the repairs for the 75th Street. I'm here to answer any other questions.
Are there any questions for Director McDonald? Yes, Stacy, Ms. Chaveta, excuse me.
Yeah, I just have a question. Is it common for, like, why wouldn't we do an RFQ together? Were we able to, like, review the requests for the RFQs too, or was it just Overland Park that made that decision for HDR?
We reviewed it with Overland Park. We had our project coordinator was part of that, along with the city council member from City of Overland Park and City of Overland Park staff.
It seems like that fee jumped like crazy. It's not like construction material, it's just fees.
Yeah, and basically, the first fee was, it was an estimate by City of Overland Park engineers, because they want, they thought that number was going to be high, and then when it came back, and their first estimate came in a lot higher than this, so they negotiated down with them. So this is the lowest they can get.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Ryder.
Does this include the actual repairs, or is this just design fees?
This is just the design for the repairs on that bridge. There's a pier that they are going to determine whether it needs replaced or if it needs repaired, and that would entail some road construction on top, some detours, and supporting at the bridge, so that's why the design costs are quite high.
Ms.
I just want to make a comment. I always have to have a little conversation up here, because we're working, we have things shut down for the West Frontage Road Bridge right now.
Yes.
And then this is a different bridge.
Correct, yes.
Okay, because I know I'm going to have to explain that to others as well.
Yeah, and this would, again, this project is, was scheduled in 2023, so West Frontage will be completely undone, and everybody will be happy with it by the time this one comes up.
Yep.
Good to know. Ms. Ryder.
Is there plans for a beautification in this design as well, or is it just a bridge?
It's just to fix the structure itself. They had their biannual bridge inspection, and they found some deficiencies that needed taken care of, so it's just to fix that.
Okay. We seem to have combed in our hands here. I would entertain a motion, then. Ms. Hands.
I move that the council authorize the mayor to sign the revised interlocal agreement with the City of Overland Park to cover the design cost for the 75th Street Bridge repairs.
Second, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next item on the agenda is consider approval of ordinance amending Section 4790 of the Code of Ordinances related to electric bicycles. Director Slocum, you want to address that?
Yes, good evening, mayor, council. Before you this evening is an ordinance amending Section 4790 of the Merriam Code of Ordinances as it relates to the electrical, electric bicycles. Several weeks ago, there were changes to the STO that changed the definition of the electric bicycle, which then impacts our ordinances. So to simplify enforcement of this, we are looking to just mirror the STO, so that's what the changes that are before you this evening. While the redline version that was included in your copy looks very daunting, the changes can be summarized very easily. The output of power has been reduced from 1,000 kilowatts to 750. They want the manufacturers to provide clarity in identifying the three different classes of bicycles, because as of today, you can see an electric bicycle and you don't know what class it is. There's a, so that's on there, as well as the definition of electric-assisted scooters and motorized bicycles has been updated to exclude electric-assisted bicycles in our code as well, because in the code before, we had to find which one was allowed, so now all three are allowed. So we are asking that the first reading be waived this evening, and so that this can be adopted into our code.
Well, I'm really glad to see that the power has been reduced on those things. I was going down Antioch the other day, my itty-bitty smart car, and one of those electric bikes passed me. And I was going uphill, and it was terrible, but anyway. It's a joke for you, but I think we can.
I have a question.
We have a question.
What do electric-assisted bicycles that are over 750 watts classify as?
Well, currently, if you have one, they will, they would likely be a Class 3, I believe, Class 2. They didn't do it in order, so I have to think about it for a second, just a second.
So the really strong and really powerful ones are just all kind of lumped into?
They still can't go greater than even the 1,000 kilowatts. They were still maxed at 30 miles per hour. No electric-assisted bicycle can go faster than 30.
Doesn't it become a motorcycle?
No, it's still an electric bicycle, because it still can be pedaled. A motorcycle cannot be pedaled, unless I'm explaining something incorrectly. I'm looking for advice, but yes, they're just lowering the kilowatts, because they are becoming a lot more popular, and you're seeing more and more of them on the market.
Go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
Actually, a statement and a question. So the statement is, I think we do kind of get in the weeds, because if you all remember, the moped was motorized, basically a motorcycle with pedals, so we need to be careful with that. My other question is, does this have to relate, does this relate directly to just, like, when we approved motorized vehicles on Turkey Creek Trail, or is this, does this extend to the streets?
No, this is just for parks' trails. This is specifically a parks' ordinance. So basically, these are complaint-driven. We don't have speed limits on the trails, but if you're on the trail and someone comes flying by and isn't obeying the rules of the trail, then it's complaint-driven, and that's when our finest will get involved.
And then my final question is, there is a group of people that enjoy tinkering and building their own electric bikes. Does this take that into account, because it won't be regulated by necessarily rules that we impose on corporations that are building these bikes?
I can try to address that. So the origin of this change to the ordinance comes from state statute, and state statute adopted this year, adopted the provision that you have to have a manufacturer sticker on there identifying what class it is. I, you know, I suppose, I don't know if there's a workaround for someone who does it out of their own shop, but that is a required posting, and whether someone can claim to be a manufacturer out of their own garage, I don't know.
The reason I ask is because you can actually buy electric motors to turn your regular bicycle into an electric bike all over the internet, so I'm just trying to avoid.
It says in the ordinance that if it's modified, it has to have a new sticker or fixed.
Thank you. I missed that part.
And I will say, too, that Anna was referring to the fact that the ordinance as written only applies to bike trails. However, this classification into these three classes comes straight out of the standard traffic ordinances, so it should have equal applicability on city streets.
Thank you for those.
So that was my question, because there are parts of our bike and trail system that are part of the park trails, and parts of it that are sharrows are going to be in bike lanes on streets themselves, so there will be no difference between the two enforcement pieces? Is that?
We copied STO.
Okay.
So, because that's how it's stated in STO.
And it's in, so we're all?
We're all, that's why we did this.
Whatever, okay.
But my change tonight is specific to parks.
All right. Just want to make sure we're being consistent.
Right, that's why we, that's why we wanted to do this.
And that's why we're here?
Yes.
And that was one of the reasons why we did this change, is because the old bike ordinance had, excuse me, had the old definition from the STOs with the old horsepower, and so for purposes of consistency, we wanted to change this as well.
Okay. Are there any other questions? This would be, I would entertain a motion for waiving of the first reading. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council waive the customary first reading of an ordinance amending Section 4790 of the Merriam Code of Ordinances.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, well, we consider that first reading waived, as I would entertain a motion. Okay, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance amending Section 4790 of the Merriam Code of Ordinances related to electric bicycles.
Go see a second. Mr. Silvers.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. While the first item on staff is Parker Recreation Advisory Board minutes, does anybody have any questions for Director Slocum about those minutes? Saying none? Okay. Looks like the next thing would be a September CIP update. Director McDonald.
I have our September CIP update. I'll start with our West Frontage Road project. Miles Construction is currently working on the new storm drainage along the project. Curb replacement on the west side of roadway is underway. West Frontage Road is currently closed and is planned to be closed until September 26th, and that's for the bridge deck repairs and the installation of new concrete approach slabs, which is a portion between the asphalt and the actual bridge itself. We are currently on schedule, and our substantial completion date is November 18th.
Just, just the south end is closed, not the whole street?
Correct. Just, yeah, it's closed at the bridge.
Right, right.
The 55th Street Improvement Project, this evening you approve Kansas Heavy's contract. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for later this week. Contractors actually anxious to get in there, so they plan on starting sometime in October, and the ending date is May 31st, 2023, and that's just due to, we don't know what's going to happen during the winter, so we can not have liquidated damages for stuff beyond their control. And the 2022 Mill and Overlay Program, that's substantially complete. The sod is currently scheduled to take place in the next few weeks. And then the last but not least is the Merriam Drive Street Improvement Project from Johnson Drive to 55th Street. We just received the preliminary plans from BHC Engineering, and we're going to be going over those with our city engineer and our design consultant to make adjustments. That's all I have. Yeah, here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Director McDonald?
I don't have a question, but I do want to say I really applaud you, whomever, for getting the work done with Water One, so that we're going to get that work done at the same time and under our, our own contractor, right?
Yeah, that's our goal.
That's what we approved.
Yes, and that's how that works, is their plans will be with our plans, their bid sheet will be with our bids, and we accept the contractor, they review it, and they have the right to say no, but it's going to save them money, so.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, that's good, Jim. Any other questions for Director McDonald?
Really quick.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Yodrich.
Do we expect to have, like, a design to approve for the Merriam Drive project?
We plan.
To put out to bid, sorry.
Yeah, our plan is to probably go sometime in December, but we will probably have a public meeting with those plans before we actually go out to bid for any changes or things we need to adjust.
Great, thank you.
Looks like we have no more questions for you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I guess we will ask Mr. Engel if there's anything else from a staff perspective.
The only item I have is just a reminder that the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation Breakfast is September 22nd at 7:00 a.m. at the Overland Park Convention Center. I think we still have a seat or two available, if anybody on council is available to attend. It's a good event in support of the school district. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anything on the face of the building?
They are aware of it, and they're working on it.
I'm sorry, did you hear the question?
Just an update on the building facade.